Good morning Chairperson. Good morning to fellow panel members as well as management of NERSA. Not forgetting the members of the public and presenters for today's session. Thank you.
Thank you. The next member is Ms Tembe Gassamane, who is the Chairperson of the Finance Committee and also a member of this panel.
Good morning Mr Fugula and good morning to other regulator members as well as our NERSA colleagues and the members of the public. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We also have the CEO of NERSA, Advocate Sitole, who is a member of this panel.
Good morning Chairperson, members, NERSA personnel and everyone who has joined us for this public hearing this morning. Thank you Chairperson.
Thank you. These would be the members that would be presiding over this public hearing. I will now go through the procedure of the public hearing and I'll read out the important elements of what we are going to deal with today. As we all know that this hearing was advertised, I think in the Sunday Times, Soetan Business Day, Build, Free State Sun, Mafeking Mall, Oho News, Isolés, Daily Dispatch, Dindaba, as well as in the NERSA platform as it is required by the National Energy Regulator Act and the Promotion of Access to Justice Act. This hearing will be held today using the NERSA rules. All parties that would be making presentations today would be required to make those presentations under oath. Applicants have been given 30 days to do their presentation. And this is an important one. Only members of the energy regulator may ask questions to the presenters. Those members of the public that may want to ask questions to the presenters are requested to send their questions to publichearings@nersa.org.za and the panel will decide on how we deal with those questions that have been asked by members. Should members want to present confidential information, they must all indicate so and the hearing will be closed for the duration of the confidential hearing part. The audio recording of this hearing will be the public record of this hearing. Please at this point, may I request that you switch off your phones or keep them on silent? And for those who are not presenting, please keep your cameras off. Those who will be presenting at the time where we have to take, make the members take an oath, will require you to switch on your camera. You may switch it off afterwards. We have been given, I think, we have four presenters in this and we'll start with them when we go through the program. May I at this point request that all of the members who are going to present will be required to state their name, the organization they represent, their designation before they start with the presentation. I will now go straight into our program. Our program, we have, as I indicated, four presenters. It's Mr Etienne Rubes from RenewE, Dr Hendrick Barnard from Elec Expert, Ms Albert Bruchmann from MMC and Mr Tommy Diaderix from Renew Consulting. I will start right away with Mr Etienne Rubes. Mr Rubes, if you could, is it Rubes or Rubes? If you can correct me when you start, but please switch on your camera. Mr Mabunda.
Chair, I need to apologize. I think you are using the the program that we have updated. I'm sure you missed the updated one. Mr Etienne requested to withdraw from the presentations and we have added a new presentation. So the number of presenters are still four, but Mr Rubes is not there. We are starting with Mr Barnard.
Okay, thank you very much. If you could then forward me the the correct program. In that case, can we start with you, Dr. Dr Barnard? If you could switch on your camera. Mr Mabunda, do we have Mr Dr Barnard on the call?
I am on, I'm just switching on the camera.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's not really good yet, but that's who I am.
Okay. Thank you, Dr Barnard. Let's make this quick. May you please raise your right hand affirm, do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you for the record. May you please state your name, designation, organization you're representing and then you may start with the presentation. You may switch off the camera after that.
My name is Hendrick Barnard. My company is Elec Expert and I am the director. And yeah, so I've been doing a lot of cost of supply studies for municipalities.
Thank you, Dr Barnard. You may switch off your camera and fly to your presentation. You have 30 minutes.
Can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can see the presentation. Please go ahead.
Right Chair, what I'd like to cover are the cost drivers in the industry, the key cost components, the realities of our current industry, then the impact of Munich Flex, then the issues relating to the retail tariffs, some conclusions and recommendations. So firstly, what are the drivers of the prices in the industry? Firstly, just a perspective from the World Bank, then looking at the Energy Regulation Act and the electricity pricing policy. So the World Bank says that efficient allocation of resources is best done by applying cost effective tariffs. The moment you distort the cost signals, you are not effectively allocating resources. Then the ERA states that efficient allocation, I think ERA, that's the wrong one, okay, but so the efficient licensee need to recover the full cost of license activities, including a reasonable return. They need to have prescribed incentives for continued improvement of technical and economic efficiency, give users proper information regarding costs that their consumption imposes. They must avoid undue discrimination between customer categories and may permit cross subsidy tariffs in certain classes. EPP position 24 says, cost reflective tariffs should reflect all of the following components as far as possible. Energy costs in cents per kilowatt hour, network demand charges in rands per KVA, network capacity charges in rands per KVA for large customers or rands per amp for smaller customers. The customer service charge need to be a fixed rand per customer per month. And we have multiple points, you could also have a point of supply kind of charge and then the cost of poor power factor. So as far as domestic customers are concerned, position 36 says domestic tariffs to become more cost effective, offering a suite of supply options with progressive capacity differentiated tariffs and connection fees. But it also says at the one end, we recognize that there are customers using very little and not needing a lot of capacity. There should be such a tariff with no basic charge, but the capacity must be limited to 20 amps so as to limit the cost. And then at the next level, a tariff with a basic charge, a capacity charge and energy charges. So that is what the entities should be doing. It positions 47 states that qualifying customers shall be subsidized through the application of a lifeline tariff. That could be a single energy rate tariff with no fixed charge, but again limited in capacity to 20 amps and with nominal connection fees. And please note that this doesn't say it's the tariff for indigenous customers. It says it's a lifeline tariff. So it could include, but it could also include non-indigenous customers. So let's now look at what are the key cost components in the industry. Firstly, for looking at a municipality, you've got your energy costs, the Eskom Eskom generation capacity charge, Eskom energy charges, active time of use energy charges, reactive energy charges and then ancillary legacy and cross subsidy charges. The Eskom network charges is reflected in a transmission access charge, a distribution network access charge and then network demand charge. As far as the municipality is concerned, their network costs have components of both capital and operating costs. And then we have consumer services and metering costs. So the question then is how should these be allocated? And this is part of the cost of supply methodology. So when we look at the energy costs coming from Eskom, all of them are allocated on a rands per kilowatt hour basis, but for the generation capacity charge, that is a fixed charge. Then as far as the network costs are concerned, Eskom has two charges that are based on the installed capacity or the actual maximum that the customer requires or the notified load. And then they have the maximum demand charge which is based on the monthly maximum demand. As far as the municipal network is concerned, those costs, both the capital and operating could also be split between a very fixed and a less fixed type of charge, which we can also say it's dedicated and shared cost. So typically, for example, the network's very close to a customer is dedicated and you need to pay for that every month, whereas networks further away can be shared between other customers and thus it could be a variable charge. And then the consumer services costs, which include both the capital part of the connection and the operating costs should be allocated on a rand per customer basis. So let's just look at what are some of the realities facing the industry at the moment. Generally, our finding customers are using less energy, but their peak demand is not necessarily reducing. This is underlined by the installation of renewable power, specifically PV power. This is known to the industry. And furthermore, the industry is opening up for competition and wheeling. And we know whenever you recover fixed costs through your energy charges, this becomes a massive problem. This is the so-called duck curve, which is a characteristic of the massive installation of solar system. This is from California and already in 2016. So on the bottom, you've got hours per day. And then you've got the first curve is the solar production, the orange curve is the current net production and then the top curve is the total load in the industry. So this is what South Africa is beginning to experience and in municipalities to a lesser or a bigger extent. So what are the impact of this reality? Eskom's revenue drops because of the reduction in sales, but the capacity doesn't. So their big costs, specifically in generation, is a capacity cost. So because the current fixed costs are recovered through the energy charges, it creates a massive challenge. Municipalities are in a similar situation and they lose more revenue than the savings in purchase costs because fixed costs are recovered through energy charges. And this is made worse through the inclining block rate tariff where high usage consumed customers are severely penalized. So when these customers reduce less, the revenue impact is massive. So the bottom line is that the industry has to provide backup supply without being compensated for. Because the fixed cost is in the energy charges, a part of that fixed cost is not recovered because the customers are using very little energy. So what is the industry's response been to this? Eskom introduced the generation capacity charge. NERSA only allowed a portion of that to be implemented with some kind of phase in, which obviously makes sense to limit the impact. And then municipalities are introducing basic and capacity charges and getting rid of the IBT tariffs. And I want to look at the Munich Flex tariff and specifically focusing then on the impact of the Eskom generation capacity charge. I focused on Munich Flex, which obviously impacts municipalities. Those customers staying on Mega Flex, obviously the impact would be different, but this has been my focus. So this is the Mega Flex tariff and Munich Flex tariff compared. But important to note here is that when you look at the typical profile of a municipality, the energy cost is increasing by 3.5% and the demand stroke capacity cost is reduced by 10%. So this inclination that the generation capacity charge is increasing the fixed cost for, certainly for municipalities, is absolutely a misnomer. It doesn't happen. I've included in my report the impact for quite a few municipalities that I have done based on whatever tariff. But you can see for some customers, the impact compared with the average 11.31%, some of them is very high, up at 25% and some of them actually have negative impact down to minus 4%. But just to summarize that, when you look at the low voltage, customers that were on Mega Flex and then converted to Munich Flex, their impact is between 14 and 16, which is, you know, 3 to 5% more than the average increase. That is similar for Mini Flex and NightSafe. And for NightSafe Rural and Rural Flex, it's actually minus 6 up to plus 6. Then at the voltage category, medium, at the high voltage, 66 to 132, the impact is between 5 and 9.5%. And for Mini Flex, similar. Those customers taking supply at more than 132, that impact is, could be zero up to 5%. So one of the big problems is that NERSA did not recognize this fact in most cases for municipalities. For example, one big municipality buying half of their power at 132, received the price increase of 13%, whereas their average purchase cost only increased by 7 to 8%. So it created that perception that it was Munich Flex causing the high tariff increases. But in fact, it's because of Munich Flex and NERSA not taking cognizance of the fact that some municipalities' purchase costs increased by significantly less than the 11.32%. So to conclude, the generation capacity charge is not causing increase in fixed charges or overall increases above the average. Munich Flex is causing massive difference in percentage increase depending on the supply voltage and the tariff that they were on before. I'm now going to move on to the retail tariffs. So the biggest problem, when we look at what the EPP and ERA is saying, is that municipalities are not offering a subsidized tariff for 20 amp customers, a lot of them. So all of the customs are on the same tariff except for the indigents. Secondly, they are not applying basic and capacity charges. And some of them take all the basic and capacity costs and they charge it as a single fixed cost instead of differentiating by capacity. And I will show you what the impact of that. There's also in some cases not significant phase in and not proper communication and public participation. So I've just taken an example by looking at some of the average tariffs of the municipalities that I've been working for. So looking at the existing tariff, it's it's for indigents. Typically, some of them are limited to 20 amps, but you have the first block for free and then the second block at 2 rand, the third block at 2.80 and final block at 3.30. Then a lot of cases, the domestic prepayment tariff does not have a basic charge. But the domestic conventional tariff have a basic charge and in many cases, the energy rates are the same. So this is a massive misnomer because this perception that prepaid is cheaper than conventional, which is simply not true. So the tariffs proposed, firstly, the indigenous tariffs stays the same. For 20 amp customers, so we propose to introduce a tariff for 20 amp customers, the first block should increase to the size, to the price of the second block. The reason for that is that the 1 rand 50 is less than the cost of buying from Eskom. And one of the other requirements of the World Bank is that you should never charge less than your marginal cost. And in this particular case, 1 rand 50 is less. Then we have one option that I looked at, if say you put all of your fixed costs as a single charge, that would be then at 600 rand a month and with an energy charge of 2 rand. And then for the actual tariffs that is cost reflective, a basic charge of 60 rand and a capacity charge of 12 rand per month. So I'm now going to look at the impact of that. So the first table, which is all in the report, just shows the current tariff and the new tariff. The second one shows the difference in revenue, but I'm going to focus on the percentage income, the impact. So the first one, we see that your domestic customer at 20 amp or the indigent ones, we propose no change. As far as the 20 amp is concerned, a small increase of actually 22 rand per month. I'll just go up again. You see the, in the second line, it's, the impact is 22 rand per month because of that first block going up from 1.57 to 2 rand. But obviously, at lower levels, the percentage is higher. Now, if we look at the option where you only have one basic charge of 600 rand for all, we see that your very low consumption customers see a massive impact of 350%, 160. And so go down only at about 1,000 kilowatt hours are you getting to a break even situation. If however, you introduce capacity charges, the impact for prepayment customers that actually don't currently pay basic charger also experience very high impact at low consumption levels. But if they are to convert to 20 amps, of course, their impact would be very small. And typically, one could very easily use 400 kilowatt hours a month on a 20 amp supply, which means our concern is really here at the 29% at 500 kilowatt hours a month. But if that is phased in over five years, you know, it's 4% per year. I believe that's manageable. When we look at the conventional customers, the option of a single basic charge of 600 rand, once again, very high impact percentages, even right up to 1,000 kilowatt hours a month. But when you look at capacity charges, 30, 40, 50, 60, we actually see the impact here at 4 to 500 kilowatt hours is manageable. For example, if the 22% is phased in over five years, it's less than, or just close to 5% per year. So this graph just illustrates this dynamic. I see I have five minutes to go. I'll be in time. So at the horizontal axis is consumption in kilowatt hours per month. On the vertical axis is rand per month, cost and revenue. So when we firstly look at the blue line at the bottom, that is the inclining block rate tariff with the rates that I have shown you. And then we have in the dark blue line, a cost reflective tariff at 30 amps. So you have a basic charge of 60 rand and a capacity charge of 12 rand per amp. So at 30, your fixed cost is here around 450 rand. And then it goes up at a single rate. So we see that breaks even here at about 500 kilowatt hours a month. However, a customer with a 60 amp supply, of course, his fixed cost would be significantly higher, but his energy cost would be the same and having a break even point much higher than the 30 amp customer. So what actually happens in the current tariff system that we are subsidizing low usage customers and overcharging high usage customers? What happens now specifically with SSEG customers? Then consumption typically come down from 800 to 1,000 kilowatt hours. It comes down to say 200 kilowatt hours, which instead of us making a profit on these customers, we now have to start subsidizing them. And this is the big, big dilemma of municipalities. So to conclude on this, there's no financial input for indigents. For 20 amp customers, 22 rand a month, the one fixed charge has severe impact at low capacities, which means effectively low capacity customers are subsidizing high capacity customers. The impact of the proposed tariffs with a basic and capacity charge for prepayment customers are currently not paying basic. Obviously, the impact is higher than we would have liked, but these customers are being subsidized significantly. And then for conventional customers, the impact is not so bad. The bottom line is that consumers with low capacity and high consumption will experience lower increase than those with high capacity and low consumption. So the two biggest problem cases is firstly, irregular usage customers like holiday homes. So typically, they come in December, they might have a three-phase 60 amp supply and use 2 or 3 or 4,000 kilowatt hours in December and the rest of a year, nothing. Those people will be penalized. The same with SSEG customers. They might use 100 to 200 kilowatt hours a month, but if there are two or three days of no sun or no wind, then the capacity they need on the network could be even higher than a normal custom because now they need their normal load and they need to charge the batteries. So the reality of these consumers is that they have been cross subsidized by other consumers for many years. And obviously, these subsidies need to be ended. It cannot be sustained forever. So what are my recommendations? NERSA should enforce the application of cost reflective tariffs which include basic and capacity charges. I believe NERSA must create benchmarks as there's been a lot of studies done already for it to create benchmarks and that to make it relatively simple to see where are the outliers which then can be in detailed analysis. I think it's important that there be adequate phase in periods to limit the impact and there need to be proper communication around the capacity charges and assisting customers to manage their capacity. So the message is that customers must not just focus on managing energy, but it's more important to focus on capacity. And there's a lot that actually can be done. And then assisting municipalities and getting approval of these tariffs and getting acceptance from consumers rather than simply rejecting any such proposals. I conclude. Thank you very much Chair. I'm available for questions or whenever there's time in your agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett. Dr. Bennett, may I request that you take your pen and paper and note the questions that the members of the panel may want to ask? And at the end of the those questions, then we'll request you to to respond. Members of the presentation.
Just give me a second.
Okay. In the meantime, whilst I'm waiting for Dr. Bennett, may I just see, get an indication from the members if they have any questions for Dr. Bennett? Please indicate by raising your hand, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mkeze. Dr. Bennett, please.
I'm ready.
All right, Dr. Bennett, it's Mr. Mkeze who has questions. Mr. Mkeze, please go ahead.
Uh thank you very much, Chairperson, and thanks, Bernard, for the presentation. Um I I will just I've got about three questions. Um firstly, what what kind of assistance should NERSA give to municipalities regarding the issue of acceptance by customers amongst other things? Just wanted just so so that we can, because we're not looking at just doing this and not have it implemented somehow in terms of the recommendation emanating from it. You 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 indicate the unbundling of the needful to unbundle this fixed fixed charge uh so that it's um transparent and clear uh to to everyone involved. I would just like to 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 check if maybe you've delineated those uh uh elements in in your in your report. And if not, maybe request that you you augment your 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 submission by by indicating them as such. Um and then um the the other issue that I have is that um uh you you said that the lifeline tariff um uh could include non-indigent customers. But if I I just want to make sure I understood what you said, but it's not done by municipalities. So you suggest then, if not, you suggest then the implementation of same uh as as such. Uh and maybe the last one, fourth the fourth one, you talk of cost reflective tariffs that they should be applied. Do you do you say that in exclusion of any form of subsidization, noting that sometimes those uh uh low or indigent customers could face a situation where they they it's it's more expensive to 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 supply to them, but but the affordability, then question comes into 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 play. And therefore, there should be some form of subsidization. Just want to to know if you are you are talking of cost reflective uh application reflective on the supplier side or on the customer side? I just wanted to ask those three, four questions. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett. Dr. Bennett, I just have one additional question. In in your experience, when you do the the cost of supply uh studies, ha- have you? I mean, what 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 are the pointers that that uh that you can assist us with that that are areas that need to be improved in the way that cost of supply studies are done? I mean, in your view, are they efficient? In your view, when we get a cost of supply study that says that the price must be increased by thirty instead of the eleven percent, do you consider that to be um reasonable and 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 efficient in your view? And those are the questions for this round, Dr. Bennett. You may respond.
Thank you, Jay. Firstly, Mr. Mkeze, um what kind of assistance must NERSA give municipalities? Um firstly, I think it would be good for NERSA to actually um send out communication uh on their website and even in the media to once and for all put aside this perception that has been created that customers are now being penalized because they are installing SSEG systems, for example. Uh there's there's a there's this perception in the industry and by customers. So that's the first important assistance that I think would help uh municipalities. In terms of the assistance with cost of supply studies, uh I I think that that is a difficult one and we can discuss that later. Then the the issue of unbundling, uh I mean, the report is is the report is quite clear um in terms of what all the cost components are. As far the tariff components is what the uh EPP says, you really need to have uh energy charges. If the metering allowed, it would be on a time of use basis. Then you would have capacity charges based on the installed capacity or notified load. Then you have maximum demand charges based on the monthly maximum demand. And then finally, your customer service charge, which is based on the cost of uh the individual supply. Um the issue of the lifeline tariff. So uh when we look at the criteria for the lifeline tariff currently, uh the indigent tariff, there are in most municipalities, thousands of customers that are using hundred to two hundred to three hundred kilowatt hours a month. But they do not qualify as indigent. Those customers are still very poor, but they are just outside of the range of the indigent. So that is what I'm referring to. Those customers need to be assisted in some way and the uh the EPP allows it. It it says a lifeline tariff. It doesn't say a tariff for indigent. So that that comes to the next question relating to cost reflective. So basically, you develop all your tariffs to be cost reflective. Then you calculate what would be the impact of subsidizing those customers that qualify in terms of this criteria. The EPP says that that burden should then be applied equally to all the non-subsidized customers. So even domestic customers that are not subsidized did also contribute to domestic customers that are subsidized. And and we had this big debate with Eskom that have put their full subsidy burden on non-domestic customers. And that doesn't qualify in terms of the EPP, because that says that burden should be on all other customers. And in my experience, in the municipalities, I've done that, impact ranges from about two percent to about uh ten, eleven percent. So it's sustainable. Uh then the question relating to um how the costs of supply studies are done. Now, I think the first thing we need to we need to clearly separate the issue of revenue requirement and the issue of the detailed cost of supply study where it's about the allocation of cost. Now, I have had discussions when that revenue, a template that went out two years ago and that was determined unlawful by the court. Um I offer my services free of charge. I have actually developed a very nice revenue requirement uh template that can be used. But I believe we need to get the industry together uh and jointly work on a revenue requirement template. Um and I include in this customers, specifically large customers, so that we develop firstly, the issue of the revenue requirement. In terms of the detailed cost of supply studies thereafter, I think uh that again is is quite a complex issue. A lot is happening in that respect, but let's at least address the average increase issue. Um that is how I propose that we do that. I hope I've answered all the questions, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bennett. Uh colleagues, any any follow up questions? Thank you, Dr. Bennett. Thank you for your assistance and we will still take you up on your offer of uh offering stuff free of charge. Uh in order to assist in ensuring that we we have alignment in the way that we see this. And thank you for inputs around the communication around the the impact of SSEG and and other things. Thank you for your time. We are now going to move on to our presenter. Thank you, Dr. Bennett.
Okay, thank you from my side.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. We have another presentation. Our next presenter is from the M M C. Mister Brachman. Mister Brachman, are you here? May I see you on your camera?
Yes, I am.
Please switch on your camera. Thank you. Thank you, uh Mister Brachman. May you please raise your right hand and affirm solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give to this panel is the truth and the whole truth.
I do.
Thank you. For the record, may you please state your name, the organization you're representing and your designation? And then you may start with your presentation. Switch off your camera if you so need to.
Okay, thank you. I'm Albert Brachman. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Manganese Metal Company. Uh can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can see the presentation. You can put it on slide mode and we'll be fine. Thank you.
Is that fine? Okay, um thank you for the opportunity. Uh just a bit of background on Manganese Metal Company. We're the last locally owned manganese benefication plant at the moment. Uh we're the only manganese metal producer in the world that are not controlled by China. Our electricity cost is forty percent of our production cost. And that uh obviously makes MMC a marginal business, being the increases that take into account the increases that we've all experienced in the last ten years. On average, we spend six hundred million rand a year on electricity alone. We produce, ah we give direct jobs to six hundred and sixty people and over five thousand jobs depends on this operation. So if you allow me, I just wanna make a little bit of a scenario on on the dilemma that we experienced in in this April increases that were uh applied to us. So if you go to a bank, you get a a home loan at ten percent interest and the bank tells you that um this is gonna be a ten thousand grand premium coming forward. Now, on the first month, the bank comes and they deduct twelve thousand grand from your account. And the reason that they give you is that, sorry, we've we've given another client an eight percent interest loan. So in order to to get to our average um of ten percent, we we had to charge you twelve percent. Now, this is exactly what happened to us in the April increase when we received our first Eskom invoice. Now, in in the banking sector, there's an embarrassment that would not allow something like that to happen. And obviously, customers got a choice. They will go to a different bank. But unfortunately, um we don't have an embarrassment and we expect NERSA to play that role to to keep everybody honest and especially the captive uh customers that Eskom has. Now, on the slide, this is the extract from the letter that was sent by by NERSA to Eskom approving a twelve point seven four percent average increase and we are into the mega flex category. Uh in historically, whenever we uh receive the information that NERSA has approved an increase uh based on the application from Eskom, that increase you would see in your next invoice uh that you received in 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 April. Um but that used to happen, but from April this year, that that wasn't the case. So NERSA approved a twelve point seven percent increase. Um and based on that, a business makes certain decisions. So uh we set our pricing for for our product to our customers. We approved our annual budget, we finalized our staffing structure and confirmed credit facilities with our bankers. Um and that's normal for a company that's got Eskom or electricity has got such a big impact on on our sustainability. So then everything exploded. So April happened and our increase for April was eighteen point nine percent, almost nineteen percent. I mean, that's you can imagine doing a cash flow forecast and suddenly your Eskom bill, which is a major portion of of your expenses, goes up by by almost nineteen percent. Then for the winter, three months of winter, the increase is four point four percent, giving us uh average for the year twenty five twenty six of fourteen point three nine percent compared to the twelve point seven four that was approved. And that for us is about nine point four million rand, almost ten million rand. And for a marginal business, ten million rand is a lot of money and it makes a big difference on on our sustainability. So with the higher tariffs, we had to um any extra production that we would have made would have been at at a loss. And therefore, we we cut our production or continue to keep at lower production because it just doesn't make sense using such expensive electricity to produce more tasks. So our question, and and that's where our confusion comes in, is who's pulling the um Eskom applies to an increase as they've done historically. NERSA approves twelve point seven four percent and we get an increase of fourteen point four percent. We're not sure what what happened to the other businesses, but for us, that that's quite a drastic change. So our question is, did Eskom mislead NERSA? Or did NERSA not fully comprehend what Eskom proposed and what NERSA then approved? And then did some electricity users receive a much lower increase than the twelve point seven four percent to in order for us to to get to to for Eskom to get to the twelve point seven four percent? And if so, we actually would quite likely know who are we subsidizing in in this process. And then just at the bottom, um like to understand what NERSA, what the impact or what actions NERSA will take if Eskom then reports effective fourteen and a half, fifteen percent increase for twenty twenty five, twenty six, when only twelve point seven four was approved. Then just next, um during the when the twelve point seven four was approved, NERSA also approved five point three six for twenty six, twenty seven year and six point one seven for twenty seven, twenty eight. And we were all very delighted about those increases, but lo and behold, a few months later, um Eskom challenged NERSA and NERSA adjusted those increases to eight point eight percent for for both years. And as we stand, we we just don't know what that increase is actually gonna turn out to be, um given the the history of of this April. And for businesses to to do proper planning, we actually need to have certainty. I mean, if if an increase gets announced, we make decisions based on that increase. And historically, it just seems that that increase, you can never bank on it because as you see just above, it it has already changed and we still don't know whether we're gonna have the eight point eight percent for for those following two years. Um and this is uh my last last slide, so quite a short presentation. So I plead to NERSA is um compel Eskom to honor the twelve point seven four percent increase and refund MMC for any overpayments that we've made since April this year. Um enforce NERSA, enforce the NERSA approved eight point eight percent for those next two years so that there are no hidden search orders coming along and pushing that rate up. And then a plea to both NERSA and Eskom to restore industry trust in the organizations on on increases and how increases are communicated and how increases are implemented. Uh thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Brachman. Mister Brachman, may I request that you take your pen and paper and just be ready for questions that the members of the panel may have to questions that the the members of the panel may have to clarify your presentation.
Uh I'm ready. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Uh colleagues, any questions for clarity from uh I've got Mister Mkiza. Mister Mkiza, please go ahead.
Uh sorry for the delay in unmuteing. Thanks, Chaperson. Thanks, Mister Brachman, for the presentation. Um I note that you you presenting basically on the tariff uh uh adjustments that have taken place and how they vary, what NERSA charges, versus what NERSA had approved and what Eskom is charging you. I'd just like to know if you have um uh explored this with NERSA in terms of discussing with the pricing team. Uh uh so this issue can be can be resolved uh or dealt with or clarified outside of this platform. And and then if not, I would employ you to do that even if there is no correction of as such of of whatever, but just to make sure that things are properly understood and that if there are any lessons to learn uh to to prevent any recurrence that can be effected. I would then also add a question to say, based on the issue at hand regarding fixed charges, do you perhaps have anything uh to talk to today? If not, I would still maybe employ you to uh submit, make any submission in this regard uh so that we don't get a situation where there are certain things that could be troubling you but have not been voiced out in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kizer. Mister Brachman, that seems to be the only concerns if you are able to respond.
Um yes, indeed, I can. Uh thanks, Mister Chairman. Yes, Mister Nikizi. Uh we have engaged with NERSA. We've provided them with some um calculations on on our numbers and how it was determined. Um but we obviously continue to to engage with with the NERSA team on on this issue and will do so going forward as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Brachman. Mister Mkiza, I would like to to confirm, but I think also the colleagues from uh uh electricity, if they they can confirm that they are engaged. I suspect that the the presentation we are gonna get from Mister Mongi from E R U G does get into a little bit of the there's fixed charges and their effect and the energy charges and and other things. But but the colleagues, if they can just confirm that there is engagement with M M C. See, oh, is that what you wanted to confirm?
No, no, not necessarily, Chaperson. I think I wanted um the presenter just to indicate um whether um what's their view on the fixed charges, but I think Mister Mkiza has indicated that they can submit a written um submission, but in the presentation, that was not clear for me, so I just thought maybe he may be ready to just give us an indication over and above the written submission that's going to be made. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Mister Brachman, do you have anything that you would want to add on the fixed charges uh or or indicate over and above your submission?
Um we'll we'll do that uh subsequent on the fixed charge of Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Brachman and Doctor Bernard. May I just request that if you could send us your nation so that we can have them as a part of our record. Thank you.
I will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, we uh thank you, Mister Brachman, for your for your for your inputs and I was hoping that one of my colleagues would confirm, but that will be outside of this. We appreciate your inputs. Colleagues, we are done with this presentation. We are going to move on to our next presentation. Our next presentation is from uh Tommy Dieter Rix from Renew Consulting. Mister Dieter Rix, may you please switch on your camera? The Magunda, may you assist?
Uh hi, morning, guys. How are you?
Well, and you? Mister Dieter Rix, do you please raise your right hand and affirm? Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give to this committee is the truth and the whole truth?
Uh I do.
Thank you. For the record, please state your name, your designation and the company you're representing. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. I'm Tommy Dieter Rix, representing Renew Consulting. I'm the owner and CEO of Renew Consulting.
Please go ahead with your presentation. You may permit, if you have one.
Thank you very much. Let me do that for you. Sorry, I will just close all of these notes that I've made. Okay, here we go. Um let me just, can you see my presentation?
Yes, please go ahead. We can see your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, guys. Um um uh so we obviously are today to just discuss the basic charges, the generation and other charges uh charged by Eskom and and as well as the municipalities. Um uh like you guys know, Nasha, I presented at the multi-year price determination of Eskom. Um uh when we had the tariff discussions and the hearings last year. And um since then up to now, there's a lot of things that I really believe is still has not been addressed. And I'm going to bring them out for for you guys to show what the uh what the impact uh is. Uh but I also wanted to highlight a few things. So I wanted to get to the cost of the basic charges and those things uh implemented. So if you at first think I'm not talking to that directly, I'm going to bring it all together at the end and you'll understand why I'm taking the route I do. Um so the reason why I opposed all the tariff increases uh has a lot to do with where we are today. Um so you know that obviously there was, especially with the municipal tariffs, there was no public hearings. Um um the Eskom Retail Tariff Plan that was approved, some of that leaked into or went into the the tariff changes and structural changes that municipalities made to their own the their own tariffs. Um and then again, I really, really believe that the municipalities are not looking at the cost of electricity to their customers. They all or or most of them are budget based and not cost based. Um um so and I I also think that neither the municipalities nor Eskom is really looking at the cost of renewable energy uh and the impact that that has on uh on the bottom line um of the customers. So just a quick tariff history and challenges. So obviously, as you know from Nasha, Eskom historical framework, it spans over several decades. They've in they've, I I had, I have a whole thing on the history of the tariffs. But when they introduced time of use and various categories and uh and so on and uh to a large uh degree, the municipal tariffs are based on um are based on some of this. But every municipality has had their own was to their own design on on these tariffs and how they implement them. And this has led to 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 this. Now, I know you guys are uh aware of this, but it's just a cost reflection between the different municipalities for exactly the same customer. So if you are a a small business or a K F C or sit-down restaurant or engineering firm, you can clearly see that the cost disparity between municipalities are quite are quite big. Um and this in itself creates a a very big problem because you have uh you've got Eskom customers that is across the board, the cheapest uh to be at. Um and I'm sure that you are aware and that uh all the municipalities are aware that the constant bombardment of customers saying, we want to be Eskom Direct. And obviously, because now you have a cost at a municipality which might just be down the road. Uh you've got an Eskom supply and the prices differ a lot. So to give an example, Sandton is Eskom Direct. So the cheapest country in South Africa situated, uh the cheapest electricity in the country situated in Sandton. And some of the most expensive uh electricity in the country is in city of Joburg. I don't think it's it's a coincidence that all the head offices and all the big companies have moved away from uh the town center and into Sandton, when they can save such a substantial amount of money on their electricity. Um then renewables. Um now, I wanna highlight something here. So Eskom and the municipalities used to be a monopoly. So they were like, and I refer to this as the only baker in town. So Eskom and the municipalities have enjoyed for a vast majority of the last thirty years have enjoyed that they are the only suppliers of electricity in that area. Their tariffs are the only tariffs and their electricity is the only available electricity in in the area. And the way I look at that is, for example, they um as the only baker in town. So they didn't look at what a bread cost because they were the only baker in town. So they got the bread up to hundred rand a bread, but it was okay because you had to pay it if you wanted to buy bread. There was only one baker in town. However, with implementing renewables, all of a sudden, these additional bakers and these bakers can sell their bread at twenty rand or thirty rand a bread. And now the baker that is used to selling it at a hundred rand uh bread is scrambling and saying, what can I do? Uh I'm making a loss. And part of that is, okay, let's let's charge people just for capacity. Let's add the basic charge. And I think that leads to it feeling like it's a it's a fight on 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 renewables or a fight to say, look, you can't go over to renewables. Um uh according to your own uh statement that you made on the sixth of November twenty twenty five, there's already been approved generation facilities um or registered generation facilities of over sixteen thousand megawatts and rooftop solar and so on of over six thousand one hundred and forty-two megawatts. So that is, that is a lot of new bakers on the on the on the block. And it it really has an impact in the overall cost of energy. Um the other thing that I also don't think that that is properly taken into consideration is the resale of electricity. Um here's the resale law. Remember, every municipality or even Eskom has got shopping centers, office blocks and so on and so forth. And basically, every landlord is a reseller. And they are also stuck within the rules and regulations of each municipality. So you get this knock-on effect of a tariff decision not only affecting direct customers but also the uh affecting indirect customers uh quite significantly. Um so and there's some instances where the the fixed charges or the 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 cost of a fixed charge is absolutely ridiculous. I this, I showed you here, City of Tzane or Ikeruleni. City of Tzane has got a fixed cost for ATM customer of twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-seven rand just before they've even used the plug. Um Ikeruleni is per ampere phase, but for that same ATM supply, that customer is going to pay six thousand three hundred and seventy-four rand before they've even turned on a uh a plug. And this is not a large customer. This isn't an industrial customer. These are the small businesses. And um I invite you and uh the members from Nasha or anybody to come with me to, when we explain to these customers why they have to pay five thousand rand a month before they put on the plug. Again, a decision made in a hearing somewhere is creating some people to close their businesses or to not be able to afford. In the city of Tzane, I believe strongly that that is why there are so many businesses in houses. Because houses obviously have residential tariffs and at twelve thousand five hundred rand fixed cost, you can almost uh pay a certain portion of a mortgage at a house. Uh so your hairdressers and all of those smaller business to medium businesses trying to survive from 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 how from houses. Um and I wanted to show you the 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 impact um of of renewables and I'm going to go through a few slides. Um and the reason why I'm doing this is so that you can understand what I refer to as the problem of the remainder of the electricity. If we look at the electricity tariffs as individual silos and we approve a certain portion, for example, just fixed charges or just basic charges or just generation charges, the problem is with the cost of the remainder. So I took a small business, like the one I just showed above, with a six thousand kilowatt hours a month consumption. If they were to half it with with renewables, the cost per kilowatt hour in both instances go up quite significantly. So because the, there's a fixed portion of the 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 account and then a variable portion based on the kilowatt hours. Uh and this cost increase can become really dangerous in in some instances. So and the reason for this is, and again, that's where I want to get to, is I don't think Eskom nor the municipalities have taken into consideration how much in trouble they really are with renewables. And the impact that renewables is going to have on the system. They want to increase their electricity to make budget and say, look, we cross-subsidizing and we've got non-payment and so on and so forth. But the paying, the paying customers can get renewable energy from as little as one rand a kilowatt hour. And even battery solutions at between two rand fifty to three rand fifty uh kilowatt hour, depending on it 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 varies a lot on the scale and the size and so on. But this is important because if you, the Eskom current tariff, uh if you take all the charges and you combine it, even in a municipal scale or at a very large scale, it's sitting at two rand seven cents a kilowatt hour more or less. If you've got that sixteen thousand megawatts coming in at a wield rates at eighty cents or one rand a kilowatt hour or one rand twenty-five even, it's going to have a severe impact on on the total, on the cost of 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 energy. And as well as what Eskom is 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 thinking their profit margins and so on will be. For the first time in 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 a, or not for the first time, but I I read an article the other day that said in September, Eskom was expecting an increase or an uptake after the winter period. And there wasn't. Uh and the article referred to a nine percent drop in consumption year on year. And again, renewables, if you can buy bread at half the price, then the baker that's always been there, you are going to do it. And I think the, it it's it's one of those conundrums that we can't just keep on ignoring and making as of uh or pretend that it's not part of the equation. Um and carry on while the paying customers are frustrated with service, are frustrated with the the charges that they that they get. And they either move to a place where they pay cheaper for electricity like Eskom Direct or they move to an alternative uh energy supplier, renewable energy uh partner or so on. Um I wanted to show you the cost of uh impact on the study of a C O J customer. This is for a house, a normal single-phase ATM supply for for a house. Um this customer's uh system costs round about two hundred and fifty thousand rand in today's uh in today's um um uh cost. Uh um it was a sixteen sixteen kilowatt system, eighteen kilowatts of panels and about fifty-one kilowatt hours of battery storage. Uh as you can see, for a municipal customer, they fairly big use two thousand one hundred kilowatt hours on a month. Um their Munich account, uh this is excluding that, by the way. Their Munich account would have been around about seventeen, oh, seven thousand seven hundred and twenty before they installed solar. After they've installed solar, they are only consuming on average three hundred kilowatt hours or less a month from the municipality, which dropped that bill down to a thousand nine hundred. That ball is uh a thousand one hundred of that is uh again, it's a fixed cost. So you can see the jump between the three rand sixty and the six rand fifty. And if it increases even further, or let's say the uh city power or so on decides, no, we need a three thousand rand a month basic charge, it's going to push this to over ten rand a kilowatt hour. And it's just going to be better for this customer to say, you know what? The remainder of the electricity, I'll just generate that from a generator. I'll just generate it myself and go off-grid. Uh and I think in the next few years, we are most likely to, if something doesn't drastically change, we are most likely to see a mass exodus from municipal uh we are most likely to see a mass exodus from municipal uh from municipal full ele- energy supply, either via behind-the-meter solar and renewables or just leaving. Uh 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 one of the uh one of the things that I'm getting a lot at the consulting firm is people saying, look, we want to expand, but help us find where the cheapest electricity is. And if eh the the difference between municipal electricity and Eskom electricity uh is already so so big. And the advantage that they have at Eskom Direct, they can do wheeling, they can have other benefits and the cost is less than half of what it is in a municipal area. They're not going to go to that municipal area and the municipalities are committing suicide uh and not doing anything about it. Um so again, uh I know I've said this in the past, but I think I really think it's the only way forward is a tariff reform. Uh we need access to affordable electricity for low-income households. Uh when we had the, when we had the hearings, you could see the plea of of the indigent community that really struggled and that we promised that they were going to get FBE and those kind of things. And I think we need to uphold that promise and make sure that the low-income households are looked after. Um then we need standardized tariffs for business and residential customers. Um we need to encourage renewable energy, but we need to also look at grid viability. So I'm a big um believer of renewable energy and the impact and the the uh the positive impact it has. But we seriously not start, need to start looking at the grid viability and the cost of the remainder of the energy. So the the less kilowatt hours is being transported on the transmission lines or so on, uh or the less people consume electricity in municipalities. It 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 severely um uh impacts the grid or the distribution side of the of the grid. Um um and there's a there's an important thing for us to balance that cost and eh uh the the cost and accessibility to energy. And then, again, the consequences, uh we are, we can dance around it, but we are quite far in the utility debt spiral. I mean, we've not just kind of approached it, we are properly in the utility debt spiral where the cost of energy far outweighs the um uh the or or is bigger than renewables. Uh again, with that, with this house, just to give you a another thing, the return of an uh uh on investment is forty-four months. This system was guaranteed for hundred and twenty months. If you take the cost of energy for that thousand eight hundred kilowatt hours that this generates, that energy with the batteries, with everything comes to below two rand a kilowatt hour over that, over that period. Um it so the cost of renewable energy is already cheaper than the cost of municipal en- energies. It's not something that we're going to get to, it's something that we are already there. Now, this tariff structure that I'm suggesting in the and what I um uh again, is a single tariff across all municipalities for all consumers. I really think that this can benefit Eskom, as in some instances, their business tariffs and their so on is so much less than the than the small consumers. But for the large consumers, I know there's some large consumers in municipal areas that's literally closing down because of the cost of energy is just too much in that area. Uh I had a meeting a few weeks ago with uh Kofta and other um other uh MM and so on of municipality where the customer said, look, the cost of energy in this municipality is so much that we are now going to close if something cannot be done. So I I I I know that the municipalities are going to scream and shout. I do have a lot of I uh proper proposals that I can give in in that regard to how we can transform and what we can do for change. But I think if we don't have a look at a unified, proper tariff structure, we are going to chase and this this municipality is going to scream because they've got a basic and that one here. And by the time all is said and done, the grid is is going to be at the verge of collapse and the paying customers would have had exited. And you're not going to have any paying customers, uh or the municipalities are not going to have proper paying customers left. So, yeah, I think that is, that is it from uh from my uh from my side. I'm going to share, uh obviously share this presentation with you as well as the the suggestions that I that I presented with the my uh tariff opposition when I we, before the municipal tariff was approved. So I'll send both of that to you. Yeah, thank you for your time. I hope it was of some insight. Uh yeah, thank you very much, members.
Thank you, Mr. Dedrick. Thank you for your inputs and we appreciate that you will be sharing the presentation with us. Thank you for that. Mr. Dedrick, may I just, I would just wanna check with the members if there are any points that they would like to clarify? If you could have your pen and paper ready to note the questions, members, any points to be clarified? Well, I'm still waiting for any hands that may come. Mr. Dedrick, you you have got Mr. Mkiza. So let me take Mr. Mkiza first before I I ask Mr. Mkiza, please.
Thanks and thanks, Chaperson, and thanks, Mr. Dedrick, for the presentation. Uh for from my side, I noted the fact that you had also um objected. Uh and and my my question would be, since then, have you had an engagement with the the NERSA team that is looking at uh uh electricity tariffs? You are looking at also the the issue of um the 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 tariff restructuring. To see, have you have you engaged uh both with Nelson Eskom in this regard and municipalities? Because I think they they, when we get to this platform, it also helps to have had those technical engagements. So that whenever you've got a an argument, they, we should also pay in mind that there are counter arguments and it helps to have a balanced view. Like as a regulator, we then have that view on on both angles. So just like to 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 check if that has been done and also to request that if there's any additional information that you submitted within the seven days of this public hearing. So it can help us. We don't um consult for the sake of just consulting. We consult because we are due admit that you don't have the monopoly of wisdom and we need all such inputs to come up with a good decision at the end of the day. Thanks, Chaperson.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Mkiza. Mr. Mr. Dedrick, any any response? But maybe before that, can you can you just, from from your, from your proposals, recommendations, we must have a uniform uh uh price or structure for all municipalities. Having said that, when you consider that we have municipalities with different customer mixes and municipalities with structures, do you think that would that would really uh work if you have a uniform structure? Some some municipalities are not like Eguruleni that you had used. For instance, the city of Joburg is is a typical municipality that looks big but does not have the customer mix that would make it behave like Egu Egu Eguruleni. Have any comments on that, Mr. Dedrick? Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh first firstly on the engagement uh that Mr. Mkiza uh said, I'm happy to engage, uh I have not, so but I'm happy to put time aside, come through to uh you and workshop. Uh I've got a lot of access to customers of all different sizes, like in our um help the steel industry. So we've got some of the largest consumers, but also um some really small consumers. So I think the the mix between the different customer categories and where they are can be of valuable insight to the to Nasha and I'm happy to to come and sit with you at any time and give my time and so on and engagement. There was certain things that I've that I've emailed, but I think face-to-face engagement might might go a long way. Um and then on the profitability of the municipalities, uh when when I did utility management uh and the part of the resale of the energy, when you sell the electricity on to the customers at the resale tariff, uh in other words, at the proved tariff that they would have paid if they were a direct customer of Eskom. The Eskom tariffs before the retail tariff plan was always of such a nature that there was an over-recovery of between twenty to thirty-five percent on average on an Eskom building. I do think that certain municipalities might have less and certain municipalities might have more, depending on their on their mixes. But I think overall, if a single unified tariff structure is well put together, then in it will be the profitability and the distribution cost and the transmission costs for each customer category. Um my, and and this is just a personal thing that I that I think, I think if 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 everybody goes goes off-grid, then it will create a problem. I think the perfect solution in my perfect unicorn world is for municipal and Eskom electricity in the next ten years to become, to use the sixteen thousand megawatt as well as other additional energy to reduce the cost for all consumers and to stop this self-run to renewables. I think renewables are great, but it needs to be implemented correctly. So I do think that there is a profitability uh in some of the, in some of the scenarios that I've worked on and that I would gladly share with you um when we meet. I've already taken a lot of this into consideration on how it can be done. And but yes, uh short answer is for all different kind of municipalities, there will be a profitability. The biggest thing that the municipalities need to look at is the is the indigent communities and the amount of FBE. But that can be balanced with provincial and national government uh because it differs between municipalities. Some have very uh few, but others are quite heavily burdened with with these kind of customers. Uh but I do have proposals and I think uh um uh fixed uh calculations and so on that can that can really speak to this and that can show this point quite elegantly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dedrick. Thank you for for your inputs. Mr. Mkiza, let me just check if you covered because I think a lot of what Mr. Dedrick has said is something that we would need to work with to get done. Some case?
I agree with you, Chaperson. I'm I'm covered by the response. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dedrick, thank you for your inputs and I think this presentation you promised uh to provide. And I think my colleagues, as you have been participating in a lot of our public hearings, will also be in touch with you. We need to find this solution. Thank you.
Speaker, appreciate it.
Thank you. Colleagues, we are gonna go on to our last presentation and Mr. Mabunda, can you just check if there were questions that were sent? Uh if we we need to deal with them, but if not, we are gonna go on to our next presenter. Our next presenter is from the E I U G. I've got the name of Mr. Fanele Mondi. Mr. Mondi, may you please switch on your camera?
Good afternoon or good morning, Chair, uh and and colleagues on the on the time. Um I am, apologies, I'm trying to switch off, you know, switch on my camera.
Okay, Mr. Mondi. Thank you, Mr. Mondi. Mr. Mondi, may you please raise your right hand and affirm, do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to give to this committee the truth and the whole truth?
I do, Chair.
Thank you. For the record, Mr. Mondi, may you please just state your name, your designation, company you're representing, and then you can start with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Fanele Mondi. I am the CEO of Energy Intensive Users Group of Southern Africa, E I U G for short. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mondi. You can go ahead with your presentation.
Chair, before I do, um I've got a colleague, uh I would like to assist me with this presentation. It will be mainly when it comes to the Q and A, Chair, um if you allow me.
Thank you, Mr. Mondi. To make it smooth, may we just get that colleague to switch on the camera and we just administer the oath?
Thank you, Chair. It will be Dr. Nick Dawson, uh who's the Deputy Chair of E I U G. Uh please, Nick, uh do your your oath.
Thank you. Dr. Dawson, may you please raise your right hand and affirm, do you solemnly declare that the evidence you'll give to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, may you just state your name, your designation, company representing?
It's Nicholas Finch Dawson and I'm the Deputy Chair of the E I U G.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mondi, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh I'll switch off my camera. Uh Chair, can I just check if the presentation is visible on your side or some putting it on presentation?
It's visible.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Uh Chair, uh maybe as a start, um let me refer to the comments you made earlier on about us uh giving a detailed breakdown. I must apologize, we didn't do that. Uh we just summarized, you know, the presentation we've uh we've made. However, we had shared a detailed breakdown with NERSA on the twenty-second. It was prior to this uh consultation and hence we thought it is not necessary. Um but as part of this submission, we will attach that presentation. Time allowing, I might touch on a few of those uh slides which we shared, uh which gave that a full uh picture in terms of the impact, Chair. Um with that having been said, I will start uh my presentation, Chair. Um we 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 will cover just who we are and the context of this uh uh hearing and 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 challenge rather, um as well as just uh the very brief summary of our scenario modeling, E I U G concerns, uh what we perceive as market risks as well as broader issues. And then we'll have recommendations and conclusions. Uh after the conclusion, Chair, I have, uh since now, uh you made that comment, attach the full presentation we need at uh at NERSA on the twenty-second, Chair. Um Chair, before I start, I just want to acknowledge the the presentations which have been made by colleagues before me, which in my view, they touch on basically the very se- sa- the same or very similar issues which we have identified, which my sense tells me that this is really indeed uh an industry issue, it's not only an issue that affects large power users in this instance, which we represent. In terms of who we are, Chair, I'm not gonna go into details other than to say that uh our key focus areas are really about affordable and sustainable electricity pricing, uh which is the subject of this hearing today. Uh but we are also very concerned about the issues of security of supply, quality of supply, as well as the decarbonization of energy. Um the context, Chair, as I indicated, is that we represent large power users in South Africa. Um and we support this inquiry, uh which is looking at the at these fixed charges, the GCC et cetera, Chair. We fully are behind this uh and we really hope that it will deliver, you know, um um the results uh that will satisfy all the affected parties. We are submitting, uh or rather, our members have submitted uh the appealing data as requested in terms of the consultation uh paper on the inquiry. Uh as an association, we ourselves not keep any customer data um for competitive reasons, but also for compliance with the Competition Act. And and therefore, what we had done was to do um a scenario-based modeling, uh which is on the attached presentation, the one I I referred to, Chair, which I said we made it at NERSA on the twenty-second of September. Um we we have the data, we have the model, um and we have indicated to NERSA that um that that model, we can make it available to NERSA if they want to test the data or any other data they may wish to to use for that purpose. Uh but obviously, because there is some I P R associated with it, we would request them to um assign that non-disclosure agreement with the relevant uh modeling uh uh entity. Chair, um the the the, in 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 a very sh- uh very, very uh brief uh summary, Chair, um the key scenarios we want to to share with, to talk to is the one which look at ninety percent uh of N M D uh right around. Is the one which look at ninety percent uh of N M D uh right around the year. And then we also uh provided another scenario where we look at N M D only for the low demand season. And fifty percent in the high demand season, which uh as you would appreciate some of our companies, that's what they do. Is that they produce more during summer and then less during the the high demand season, which is winter, uh when things are quite expensive. We we are just putting this as a contrast, Chair, but there are more scenarios which were modeled. Out of these um two scenarios, um the very, very um basic summary is that. Um for Mega Flex customers, um we see increases that range between eleven percent um to eighteen percent. Um I think that was also reflected by the presentation, if I recall well, by Doctor Bernard. And I think Mister Brookman also touched on the impact which they saw, which is around nineteen percent for their facilities. Um this is the same result we see, Chair, on the different scenarios we have modeled. I must also also indicate that some of our uh members are indicating that these costs for some of their specific operations. Not necessarily the full uh customer load, but certain operations, they see these increases going as high as thirty percent, Chair. So this this is a huge uh matter for 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 us. Mister Brookman indicated, um and he's not a member, I must say, uh but certainly. Um is he's within the constituency we represent, where these members uh have footed sometimes up to sixty percent. Uh of costs being pure electricity. So you can imagine an increase of nineteen percent to thirty percent. Uh on forty to sixty percent of your overall cost, it changes completely. Um your business uh viability or sustainability, Chair. So these issues are quite. Uh a very sore point for our members. The the concerns, Chair, we we are highlighting is that uh around affordability and competitiveness is that these tariff increases. Are far exceeding inflation and 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 they threaten industrial viability and competitiveness. Um I think we are all aware of um the level of the industrialization we have seen over the, you know, probably one and a half to to two decades. Uh but also, we are seeing serious challenges um right now, Chair, as we speak. Where some of our members are closing their operations, uh that is on the on the on the. On the on the public uh press, Chair, um where there is uh um talks about, you know, uh retransements, et cetera. So these have a real impact, Chair. We are not simply theorizing uh around these issues. The issues of cross subsidies, um we 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 feel that sometimes these are just an additional industrial input tax. Which has got nothing to do with the uh uh cost reflectivity, Chair. Um not that we say that there is no need to assist, you know, in terms of uh affordability for those who cannot. Um but you will appreciate that these subsidies are not only limited to 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 to. To to affordability, but they are also apply across various um voltage levels. So that that is also another reality, Chair, which um uh is there. Um I think um somebody touched on the presentation um uh where, um I can't remember whether it was Tommy. Um about the issues of the of the of this sub of this subsidy, Chair. Um being allocated only on 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 few customer categories instead of applying it across. Um it's a a our members are amongst those who carried the most burden of some of these taxes, Chair. Um the structural uh time of use adjustment has uh also given us um a very worrying trend. When it comes to the costs, whilst we appreciate the need to reduce the ratios between winter and summer. But if you consider that summer has got more months, you know, um increasing. Um because effectively, what has happened is that uh our model, I think, shows as high as twenty one percent increase of the summer. Um tariffs compared to the six percent of the winter tariffs. And most of our members, they use high consumption during winter, I mean, sorry, summer than winter. And therefore, there is that disproportionate increase in costs as a result of just that change alone, Chair. Which we think that may be something we need to to look at closely. Um the fixed charges, um they are uh reducing at higher voltages and in principle, we 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 welcome that. Um the need that is in theory uh of the need for the G C C. Uh however, we 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 believe that it is not very clear, you know, how that seven percent, which in Eskom is introduced. Uh came about, uh inasmuch as we are of the view that seven percent is reasonable. Um but we 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 think there is a ne- need for a clear mechanism, as well as a clear vision of how we're going to move forward with this. As well as analyzing the impacts of this G C C on existing projects, Chair. Um our view is that um some of our uh existing projects which were brought in in part. Because of the energy security we're facing over the last few years. Now, those business cases get easily um uh destroyed by this introduction of G C C. We had a conference about a week and a half ago, Chair, where uh one of our members presented a business case. Um where they had, I think, about twenty five percent of benefit of in installing. Um a a very big, big uh uh installation, Chair, of a um a private uh generation. And that business case, just by one decision, you know, it lost um uh about ten percent of that twenty five percent, Chair, just. By one decision. So we we think that there is a need to 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 reflect on these matters, Chair, to say, how do they affect? The industry, how do they affect existing projects, how do they affect the future, Chair? Um and and then we will come, in my view, in a decision that will will probably be more balanced. Uh so that we do not have these uh efforts after a decision has been made, where we try to understand its own impacts. And then in terms of the market design risks, we we have identified. One is that excessive fixed charges may undermine uh our transition to a competitive generation market. So we we believe um um Nessa as regulators probably need to pay a closer look at that to say. What is the impact of this decision on the broader transition uh trajectory? And divesting contracts, which are not part of this inquiry, but uh is something which is out there, Chair. We believe that uh the reversing contract risk shielding Eskom from market forces leading to inefficiencies and stranded assets. And therefore, we would appreciate if Nessa will look at this closely when the time comes for such decisions. The behind the meter, uh P V and better storage could also be suppressed by high fixed charges. Uh because whatever savings you are making, you easily lose when you start introducing all sorts of fixed charges, Chair. Um uh which is probably the case with the business case I was referring to earlier on, Chair. On other broader systemic issues, we believe that Eskom's escalation um um of, I think they reported about twenty three percent recently. Um at disproportionate and not aligned with industrial realities. It's like I was saying, Chair, our members are really taking um a big pain. Where we are talking about members, um uh dear, what to call it, uh uh. Uh retrenching employees, closing uh um uh uh operations. And whilst we appreciate the work which the Eskom employee employees have done to 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 improve. Uh our energy security, but Chair, we 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 it 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 just leaves a. Um a bitter taste for those members who are losing employ- employ- employment. Because um uh of the challenges which are not in their control. And yet, Eskom, which is, uh in our view, should also be doing its best to cut its costs. Um uh shows this kind of increases in their cost uh uh brackets. Asset evaluation disputes, uh settlements, uh the current settlement, which we 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 read about. Um of the fifty four billion rennes, we we feel that um it it affects. Um our 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 re- the what to call it, the future uh increases. Cause the motivation, it seems to be more driven by the revenue requirements than the affordability issue. Uh so we 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 view that with concern, Chair. Affordability subsidy and G C C inclusion uh in the willing offsets. Uh it also distort the I P P or private uh generation project business cases, Chair. I've spoken to that. I'm not gonna repeat myself. And then in terms of the recommendations, Chair, we are making, um we believe that there is a need to publish. Uh the G C C methodology in terms of how it was determined and how it's gonna increase over the years. Uh we believe that there is a need for benchmarking. Um I think this has been shared by one presenter earlier on, uh the need for this benchmarks, Chair, just to check that. We are we are within um a reasonable uh uh space when we compare with similar. Um grades globally. And we need a clarification on on the willing, and Chair, I'm not gonna repeat that. And then in terms of the, I already touched on the impact of the time ratios. And we say that maybe we need to look at that closely and see uh the impact of those. And because you will have noticed that we also introduced, you know, um um uh new uh standard tariffs. Where it was off peak, you know, and we quantified about hundred and fourteen, which has an impact change of this cost we're seeing. Um limit fixed charges in generation, uh this we believe that we need to avoid excessive fixed uh cost recovery outside the market. Uh to preserve uh competitive price signals and investment incentives. On the market transition and affordability, um we believe that there is a need to for for Nessa to. To to work on a plan to plan viability, especially when it comes to the establishment of those western contracts we spoke about, Chair. Um we need to protect uh our industrialization, Chair, uh like we're saying, is that we have seen a significant reduction. Over the past decade and a half, uh uh in terms of our industrial load. Um if I recall well, uh this dates from two thousand and eight to twenty twenty four, they were showing um twenty three percent. This um uh um decrease in terms of the consumer load from the industrial sector and mining sector. And the same, they showed about seventeen percent retention in terms of the customers. And that uh continues, Chair, like we're saying, is that this year is particularly difficult for many of our members. Uh we need to monitor cross subsidies, ensure that industrial tariffs are not buttoned with disproportionate subsidies for other customer categories, Chair. And then in terms of the stakeholder um engagement, uh we need to ensure data-driven inquiry. Um uh like you are doing here, Chair, um but also even into the future. And use of verified data, as well as scenarios to triangulate, you know, impacts across different customer categories. Um we appreciate this public high customer uh uh categories. Chair, where we have a clear understanding of what these impacts are for industrial users, for municipalities, for I P Ps. Not just work with a standard uh tariff or overall uh revenue requirement. Um as well as we believe that Nessa has got to enforce the decisions uh being made, that they are seen through the. The 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 implementation phase, Chair. In conclusion, Chair, uh we want to say electricity tariffs have become a serious issue since M Y P D four. Um and and the approval of M Y P D six and subsequent additional increases. Has be has resulted in more unaffordable and consequently has placed intensive energy users. In an uncompetitive position and currently leading to several plant downscaling and even full closures. We believe that Nessa may need to consider time given uh for consultation based on significance of the decision. E G, an M Y P D decision is more impactful than a one-year decision, uh purely on the basis that, Chair, the M Y P D. Um is a three-year, sometimes a five-year decision, and we have thirty days uh for consultation. And uh compared to a one-year decision, which is really an adjustment than a new decision. So we believe that probably Nessa may consider having such uh decisions uh even more time. So that we are all fully aware of the impacts and we can do proper analysis going forward. We also believe that there is a need for time gap, uh for interrelated uh or dependent decisions. E G, in this uh in this uh time around, Chair, the decision around the R T P, actually, even the consultation was almost in parallel. Between an R T P and the M Y P D six. And therefore, the decisions made on R T P, you are not able to factor them in terms of how they influence. Uh the M Y P D six, which I think personally, in this particular case, that's one of the challenges we have right now. Uh that we have this inquiry is because I don't think any of us were able to factor such uh in terms of these decisions. And yet, they are dependent on each other. Nessa is encouraged to do a thorough modeling of impacts for different customer impacts when decisions are made. In the R T P, M Y P D six decision, that does not seem to have been the case. We therefore uh believe that we need to focus on electricity affordability and fairness, of course, for all customers. Uh in different tariff categories, um in the immediate to long term. While also considering the overall financial sustainability of the electricity supply industry. Um as the E I U G, we hope uh at the end of this inquiry, Nessa will come with practical decisions. Uh to correct identified discrepancies, so that negatively impacted customers are not expected to carry this burden for the life of M Y P D six, Chair. Three years, um with the kind of increases, uh for instance, Mister Bragman was talking about of nineteen percent. For three years, I mean, that will destroy any other business, Chair. We believe that out of this inquiry. Um some decisions must be made to reverse um the this impact, Chair. Chair, that's the end of our presentation, uh but uh time allowing, Chair, I could have touched on some of these slides. Which I we shared, like I indicated, with Nessa on the twenty two uh of September. Uh where we analyzed the actually uh uh some, we modeled basically um different scenarios. And these were some of the outcomes we're seeing, Chair. Uh I'm not gonna go through it other than just to show you what we're we're talking about. For instance, you can see here, uh for the man Mega Flex and local authorities, you know, the increases we talked about. Uh of eighteen percent for some, uh as well as eleven percent for others, Chair. Um we we applied it quite on a few other, you know, uh tariff categories. Um and then we we had uh the same uh for scenario two, where we used different assumptions. Uh the numbers are there, Chair, you can see some of these increases based on this model. And they go as high as nineteen comma six nine percent, this also nineteen comma seven two percent. Um we 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 did that that, uh and then we then analyzed the impact of those. Uh in terms of, I think the point you were making, Chair, around the fixed costs, um the variable costs, um uh what they mean. So we we did all of that, Chair, and we submitted this presentation at the time. Um that is after the twenty second of September to Nessa, so Nessa has got this presentation. But I attach uh attach it on on this presentation so that we can also share with you. And again, Chair, I'm emphasizing that should Nessa be interested to use or test this data. Uh the model is available on the signing of that non-disclosure agreement, Chair. Thank you very much.
Mister Mondi, thank you very much for your inputs and thank you for sharing the presentation that I thought you would be sharing, so much appreciated. Can I just request that you have your pen and paper ready for any questions that the members may have? And members, any any questions for clarity for Mister Mondi? Thank you. May I start with Mister Semen and then I'll come to. Mister Mkeze, Mister Semen, please go ahead. Mister Semen, please go ahead. Semen, may your mic maybe muted? I'm not sure, colleagues, if I'm the only one who's not hearing Mister Semen.
She is not a dear soldier.
Okay, let's do this. Mister Mkeze, may you start, what's the Mister Semen, may you come again? Uh I see your mic is still muted, but if you can unmute, please go ahead. It's still showing as muted, Mister Mister uh Mabundu. You find a way of communicating with Mister Semen. In the meantime, I'll take Mister Mkeze.
Thanks, Chaperson, and thanks, Mister Mondi, for the presentation. I I know.
I I note your, the issues that you have raised around the the what you have simulated. Like, there could be technical questions, like in terms of the chakra, of of the the statistical, the spread of the increases, vice versa, via the companies. The issue of the principles in setting and the the tariffs and the impact thereof. I think it was the issue of tariff and impact need to be separated. And then looked at the end. And I just want to to make sure that I understand you correctly. You talk, for example, of the term-of-use structural charges. And you have not exactly pinpointed what needs to be done, but highlighted that it needs to be looked at closely. Am I understanding you correctly then? That you are actually appealing for more intense engagement at a technical level? So that these issues can be researched, understood, and then communicated? And one can then revert to a platform of this nature in terms of the outcomes of such engagements? Did I understand you correctly? I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mkeze. I think we've got Mr. Semen again. Mr. Semen, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, and sincere apologies for the first mishap. I was using my laptop, which I'm not that familiar with using. And thanks to Mr. Mondi for the presentation. From my side, Chair, I just wanted to ask on the on the offer to or or under the ensuring of data-driven inquiries on the offer for 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 the use of, what did you say? Okay, yeah, the use of a data-driven inquiries. So what I wanted to ask is is whether or not the the N D A that is we are told to to sign in order to be able to access their models is is that something that is also going to expose NESA to the softwares that we can use, that we can use to do our own inquiries besides the modelings? And that's the first question. And the second comment is that, from my side, because I sat on a different assessment with the issue of our our lack of capacity to analyze data, that is, we don't have the programs and also the softwares and or softwares to do that. I'm happy that he he is offering the regulator to use their 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 modules. But I just want to ask if that includes the softwares for data analysis as well? Thanks, Chair. That will be all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Semen. Then, just the last question, I I wanted to understand, Mr. Mondi, you you said that the consultations around the the generation J C C must must happen. I I just want to find out if you mean the consultation around the regulator's decision or the consultation that was done in changing the 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 way that the J C C had been charged before? And and I think the second part, second point that you are raising, which is important, is around the separation of the R T P and the M Y P D. When we are approaching that as we speak, is is that your suggestion? Even for the for the I R S A for twenty six, twenty seven, we must have a different consultation around what is going to be included in that? Did I understand you correctly that? Thank you. Those are your questions, Mr. Mondi. You may use Mr. Dr. Dawson as and when you require him. Thank you. We have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I will I will ask Dr. Dawson to to come, you know, and and add, Chair, I will try to answer some of the questions in full. And then Dr. Dawson will will add, obviously, thereafter. Chair, regarding the the first question from Mr. Mkeze about the analysis of time-of-use tariffs, Chair. Yes, we we believe that that was one of the major contributors to to the decision we 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 got, you know, was was that we we probably didn't do a thorough technical analysis, Chair. We we think that we need to do that. And 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 it's like I'm saying, Chair, that there will always be a difference of the utilities versus those of the customers. We fully appreciate that, Chair. And 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 the question is, how then do you create that balance? And at this point, I think the feeling is that we, sometimes I think Eskom has got good resources. But they also act in their interest. I mean, that's what is expected of them, is to act in the interest of the company. And 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 then the question is, how then do you separate the interests of the company from the interest of the industry, Chair? And in this case, that's where we think that there is a need for a thorough technical analysis of, for instance, those ratios. And if they are good for the industry or just good for Eskom, Chair. So I I think that's that that's the point we're trying to make. And yes, we we are agreeing, hence we are offering the use of this model and for, sorry, for NESA to do a thorough, you know, analysis of these impacts. Because in that case, you can change the assumptions and and see what impact that will have on different customer categories. We used our own data, we explained our own assumptions. And but those may be, and one can argue that we would look at it from a consumer perspective. And and therefore, there is always a need for that balance. And hence, we're saying that we can share that for for that model, for the use of NESA, for that purpose. The same, I think, answers Miss Semen's question around the modeling tool. And this modeling tool is 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 specifically developed for for this exercise. Developed by one of our members, because I, like I indicated, we operate under very stringent rules in terms of competition law. We can't even share that model amongst ourselves, because one could easily argue that it can give you a competitive edge if you know how best to 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 align. We don't even share it amongst ourselves. And hence, we are requesting that NESA can only use it on the signing of a non-disclosure agreement. And which will obviously imply that NESA cannot use the model beyond for beyond the intention for which it is intended. And 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 yes, regarding the issue of the capacity for analysis, we certainly appreciate that it is it is not easy to to develop that. Assist in terms of that specifically for this particular decision, Chair. We didn't develop it for different scenarios or different decisions. It was purely for this. And so in that case, we think it could assist. Probably for other decisions, similar tools can then be developed. But we don't have a standard software which provides that, certainly not as energy users. There may well be such softwares in the broader, you know, market, but but we don't as E R U G. And Chair, regarding your question around the the J C C. No, we we are not, what what we're saying around J C C. We are requesting that currently Eskom face value, it looked reasonable. But what is not clear is how it was determined. So what we are requesting is that maybe NESA requests Eskom to clearly define how that J C C was, that figure of seven percent was developed? And how it is anticipated that it will grow over the years? So where we have some kind of a roadmap, Chair, to say, how will it grow? If it grows at all, is seven percent, all we're going to see, for instance, let's say, for the next ten years? Because we we believe that such decisions have got an impact in terms of and the projects which some of our members and broader I P Ps are developing to know the impact of this in terms of their business cases they are developing. You do not want to make a decision on a business case and then a year thereafter, and the value of that business case is destroyed just by one decision. So it is in that context, we're saying that we need a clear decision in terms of how that J C C was developed as well as how it's gonna be done or increased or decreased over the years, Chair. A more longer term certainty, that's what we're looking for. And then regarding the issue of the decision, Chair, we were saying that specifically the R T P, not not the R T P decision, which effectively introduced a different time of use. It introduced J C C, it introduced new standard tariffs. It introduced a change between the 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 wind, sorry, the morning and the and the and the evening periods. And that decision, Chair, has an impact directly in terms of how the 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 increase of the M Y P D six was gonna be. When when that consultation started, Chair, Eskom was graceful enough to take us through their thinking in terms of the R T P. And at the time, they were anticipating that the impact on mega flex tariff could be on average around one to two percent. That's what they were anticipating. And we asked the question to say, okay, it's fine. Tell us now with the M Y P D six application you are making, what that impact will be? And their answer was that, look, until that decision is made, we cannot know, you know, what impact it will have. But on the current M Y P D five, which it was at the time, this is the impact we have. So that's what we're talking about, Chair, is where we make a decision on one decision and not fully aware of the impacts on the next decision. And if a decision is then made, and then there is a gap between the decision, we believe that it gives us an opportunity to model the impacts. Because in this particular case, we knew that Eskom had applied, I think if I recall, yeah, well, thirty five percent or thirty six percent for this year. And then you say that, okay, if it is thirty six percent, then the impact will be this. If it is ten percent, the impact will be this. But you don't do that between two applications. It's better if you do it with the with the decision on one side and then you make something on the on the application which has not been determined. In this particular case, we couldn't do that, Chair. And hence, everybody was surprised when we started seeing these huge increases of nineteen percent as we modeled them. And as high as thirty percent, as some of our members are reporting to us. Thank you, Chair. I hope I've answered your question. With regards to I R S A specifically, Chair, I I think that decision is normally made at beginning of the year and for 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 April one. And yes, I think there could be room for consultation, Chair, there. And I'll I'll narrate a story for of about two, was it, I think about three years ago, Chair, where an I R S A decision was made, which changed fundamentally and the affordability subsidy charges for our members. They increased by thirty percent, Chair. And the I R S A consult with that to, in order to understand those impacts. Until the decision was made, only then did we see that the impact is actually thirty percent. So yes, there is a need for I R S A to be more broadly consulted upon, especially, Chair, I think that's what we said at the time. If it's gonna have such huge impacts, I mean, you can imagine one tariff category or tariff component increasing by thirty percent, Chair, and you are not aware of that. And and it related to, it resulted in a decision where, I can't remember right now, Chair, the 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 decision was on M Y P D. But it changed M Y P D for decision, just one change in one component. And and there wasn't sufficient consultation, Chair. And that was a sore point for us. We tried several times to meet NESA to discuss that and were not successful. Thank you, Chair. Dr. Dawson, Chair, if you allow me, maybe if he wants to add anything, Chair, on these questions?
Yes, please go ahead, Dr. Dawson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Nothing really to add. I think Mr. Mondi has has really covered it. Um, I I must also acknowledge that aside from our model that was developed in Excel, so it's a fairly simple Excel model. Um, very neat. But I'd like to also recognize that Eskom has subsequently um, made available on their tariff website a model which concurs with this on the same assumptions. So so both models are are basically relaying the same result. Um, but I I think it is a good point to note that where we've got several impacts happening simultaneously, in this case, M Y P D together with a retail tariff restructuring. Um, it's it's really an unfortunate coincidence of events that really we didn't um, fully have adequate time to digest and to model at that time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mondi. Thank you, Dr. Dawson. And I think your points around the consultation and splitting of this are very valid then. Because even in that, at the time when the M Y P D six decision was made and the R T P decisions were made, we 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 were working with data that probably was the level of sufficiency that would have given a clear view. But these are lessons learned and going forward, I'm sure we are going to 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 implement these lessons learned. Colleagues, questions from this, please raise your hand to indicate if you have a follow-up question? I have no follow-up question, so thank you, Mr. Mondi, and thank you, Dr. Dawson. Colleagues and members of the public, that brings us to the end of this public hearing. Thank you for your inputs and I think what really has been loud and looming large in the way that we have dealt with this hearing has been your pleas around that as much as revenue recovery or lower revenue is important, affordability is more important in considering whatever is the actual outcome that we must have. And we have had the calls of having to have a relook at the tariffs, relook at the things that we have approved. And that call is not landing on deaf ears. We will certainly have a relook. Our function is to ensure that the services that we regulate are affordable. The services that we regulate make the entity offer these services sustainable. Delicate as that balance may be, we have to find a way of striking that delicate balance between the two. Thank you for your time and this brings us to the end of this hearing. The hearing is closed.